Good evening, everyone. The hour of 6:00 PM having arrived. I'd like to call this December 2020 Workshop of Carlisle Borough Council to Order, and we will proceed next to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This will be for the Coordinated Annual Performance and Evaluation, or CAPER, of the Borough's Community Development Block Grant Funds. And I believe we have Alicia from the Redevelopment Authority Cumberland County to make this presentation. Alicia, the floor is yours.
Hello, how are you? Hello, how are you? My name is Alicia Regal-Kant, and I'm the Compliance Specialist at the Cumberland County Redevelopment Authority. Let's talk about the highlights of the CAPER. The Borough exceeded all programmatic requirements during Program Year 2019. I'm going to be talking about four programmatic requirements. The first one is timeliness. That factor was 1.19. The requirement is it can't, it may not, can't be more than 1.5 times the current year grant award. Low and moderate income benefit is the expenditure was 73.91%. The minimum threshold is 70% of the CDBG allocation. Public service cap was 14.4%. What our threshold is, is 15%. We can't spend more than 15%. The planning and administration expenditure, 14.3%. The cap is 20%. As you can see, the Borough exceeded all requirements. There were two street view projects completed, the Carlyle Antique Mall and the Market Cross Hub. There were two shop setting projects completed, Nothing Sweeter and Transformations Training and Fitness. As far as the public comment period, the CAPER is required to be on display for 15 days. It was on the Borough's website, also in the reception area at Borough Hall, the Redevelopment Authority's website, and in the reference section of the Bosler Memorial Library. There were no comments received from the public or any interested parties. The CAPER remains available online on the Borough's website and also on the Redevelopment Authority's website for public review. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Another successful year as far as I'm concerned with the Borough's CDBG funds. Any questions for Alicia on the performance evaluation for the Borough's CDBG funds from council? Okay. All right. Thank you, Alicia, very much. Moving on, citizens to be heard. Madam Secretary, are there any citizens that wish to be heard this evening?
There are not, Mayor Scott.
All right. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Anybody in the chat waiting?
There is not.
All right. Thank you very much. That closes that. And I'll now entertain a motion to review and approve the November 4th, 2020 workshop meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Deputy Mayor Schultz. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Brenda Landis. Any further discussion? Here, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. Moving into the mayor's report. I have one action item, and I'll just go ahead and make the motion, and then we'll have discussion. I move that council approve sending a letter in support of Pennsylvania joining the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, or REGI, in order to reduce the state's climate pollution and furthermore designate Deputy Mayor Schultz as a representative to REGI. A lot of folks ask, what is REGI? Well, I happen to have a little brief introduction to that. REGI is an initiative of 10 New England and Mid-Atlantic states to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the power sector while generating economic growth. Together with Connecticut, Delaware, Maine, and Maryland, it is together with Connecticut, Delaware, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, Rhode Island, and Vermont, these states, along with Pennsylvania, if we join, cap and reduce their power sector carbon dioxide emissions. This is achieved by setting a regional cap or limit on carbon dioxide emissions from electric power plants. Pennsylvania joining this consortium of states will indeed help us to become a leading, since electricity is the second-leading source of greenhouse gas emissions in PA. By participating in REGI, PA will reach our greenhouse gas emissions goals and help combat climate change. And I thought this is a great opportunity for the Borough, considering we have our own Climate Action Commission, and I ask for my colleagues' support on this. Any discussion?
I would, yes, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I give this my full-throated support. We are the only state that is part of the PJM wholesale market that is not part of REGI. I would say, in view of the fact that independent agencies like the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, with their recent MOPR ruling, has made it very clear that states have to use every public policy tool in their toolbox to mitigate the externalities of carbon emissions. And so this is one of the primary tools that the other states that are participating have moved the needle on reducing carbon emissions, and we absolutely need to do this. It has been effective not just in the carbon markets, but in reducing sulfur dioxide, nitric oxides, and acid rain in a market-based environment. And I hope we do this quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Any further discussion on this matter?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll just add and echo those statements. I think this is a worthwhile cause for us to be involved in. I'll also, like council now, I've received a sign-on letter. There's a group across the state that's looking for locally-elected officials to sign on to a letter as well. So I think the more we can double, triple, quadruple these efforts, the better. So I'll share that with council as well, if they want to sign on as individual members.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ramsey. Appreciate that. Anything further on this matter?
I'll just, I'll just sort of echo what Counselors Hicks and Ramsey mentioned. We've said over and over again, since we started our greenhouse gas initiative last year, that although we're going to do our part, it's important that this be viewed as a state, regional, and national and international objective. And this is consistent with pushing that agenda and trying to make a meaningful difference in the world.
Absolutely. Anything further? I believe I made a motion. Is there a second for that motion?
I second.
Thank you very much. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, colleagues. Moving on, community planning and smart growth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's me. Sorry, couldn't find my mute button. I have two items tonight, both staff updates. The first is dealing with a subdivision plan from Long and CHW in the Belvedere area. So I'm going to throw that to Mike or Mark, I think.
Go ahead, Mike.
Good evening, all. So the first item you see for tonight for the community planning section is the subdivision for Long and CHW. People may also know it as the Michael Garrity Plan. I can provide a quick synopsis. I just want to check, I believe we might have one of the consultants online tonight. So I see a number down there, but I'm not too sure if it's either Justin Doty or Chris Chiambi. So if they would like to have an opportunity to speak about that, otherwise I can blast ahead with a synopsis of the plan first.
I'd just need Justin to be a panelist, so he can speak if he wants to.
Okay. So we have a report prepared by staff dated November 26th. The Planning Commission did endorse the plan at its meeting on November 23rd. It included both the waiver for the preliminary and then some modifications with regards to a request for essentially postponing the provision of escrow for the development for financial reasons. So this particular plan is approximately 7.5 acres in total. It's made up of three parcels. It includes the Partnership for Better Health property to the north and then to the south. It's about 4.8 acres that primarily will be the site for the redevelopment into three larger single-family developed lots. These have been designed so that if, in fact, in the future, there was an extension for Walnut Road, that would be provided for and still accommodate the reasonable use of those lots for the residential purposes. Staff looked at the plan. There was no major issues. We did have a concern with regards to the location for the driveways and ensuring that there were meeting safe stopping site distance and also with regards to providing for maybe a arborist report to aid in the siding of the homes and, you know, the retention of the existing woodlands. So at this point, I'll let Justin Doty provide some additional background on behalf of the owner.
Hi, everybody. Can anybody hear me? All right. So I haven't done a council meeting through Zoom yet, so bear with me. I assume you all have the plan. And so with that assumption, I'm just going to explain that this plan has two major goals. Number one, if you look at the existing conditions plan, you'll notice that the former Walnut Street corridor is sort of, I'll just call it chopped up. And there's even an escaped piece of ground between the Garrity Long Track and the Partnership for Better Health. This was a kind of a problem for us as we tried to help Mike understand what he would be able to do with this property. And so part of the purpose here is to resolve that matter, put it to bed, and to work with the Partnership for Better Health to rectify that. So now, if you go to the subdivision plan, you'll notice that part of the resolution here was to do a bit of a land swap to ensure that Mr. Garrity and the Long family acquire enough ground to get the minimum driveway width needed at the two locations facing Walnut Street on either side, both on Wilson and on Belvedere, and also to make sure that the Partnership for Better Health was duly compensated with enough ground to make up for what they may or may not have been losing in that escaped piece. So a cooperative land swap agreement came forth from that and is being memorialized on the subdivision plan. And then, of course, the second major purpose here is to further subdivide the Long Track into three single-family developments. This piece has been looked at, well, going back even further, this tract was a part of a larger subdivision in the Moreland community and was composed of, you know, seven or eight parcels that were eventually consolidated and, you know, is the ground that you see before you. And after several iterations of design study, three single-family lots seems to be the most economical use of this property down the road. It fits the neighborhood really well. It shouldn't cause any type of nuisance or overcrowding or density issues. As Mike pointed out, the lot is fairly heavily wooded. It was actually a meadow not too long ago, as I understand from residents, but it's grown up into a more wooded area. So there's a mix of some mature trees, some intermediate, and a lot of scrub brush kind of stuff. Hard to walk through in the summer, but pretty easy right now. So anyway, the plan shows three dwellings and associated grading and stormwater management as required by staff and the ordinance, rather. Those layouts are temporary. They are showing what could be. Mike Garrity has no intention of developing these lots anytime soon. And because of that, I'll go into our waiver letter. Mike, I think you mentioned that we had two, but I think we're up to four waivers for this project. The submittal of the preliminary plan is the first one. Providing escrow payment at this point, we're asking for a deferral of the escrow payment until building permits are needed to get on these properties. Of course, that affects the cost estimate. And then the fourth waiver request is the operation and maintenance agreement covering all the stormwater management. We don't know if the stormwater management that we're showing is what the purchasers of these lots will ultimately develop. So it's premature to do an operation and maintenance agreement under the current ownership. We're asking that these be deferred until the time at which a builder comes and applies for a building permit. So I'm here to field any questions, if you have any, about the development. And, oh, last thing I'll touch on. Mike mentioned having an arborist come out. We're placing notes on our plan that indicate that there are mature trees on the site and that the final siding of the houses should be taking these things into account, similar to all of the other future stuff that we're deferring.
Great. So before I throw it to the rest of the council, Justin, I just had one or two questions. When I was looking at the plan, I was trying to navigate. There's currently, the partnership has a walking path that kind of connects Belvedere and then goes across onto Wilson and kind of pops out at Walnut. How would these plans impact that? Do you foresee, would a driveway go kind of through that walking path?
That's a good question, Councilman Ramsey. We're not anticipating affecting that path whatsoever. In fact, we think that they'll be able to expand it a little bit based on what we've given them. The path is located largely on the existing parcel. So if you look at the existing conditions plan, you see that their parcel line runs on the north side, on the left-hand side of the plan there, left side of the old Walnut Street corridor. And their path is located within the property, not within the corridor. So they're only gaining ground in this case.
So you anticipate your driveway would actually be coming in south of that path? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last question I had before I throw it to my colleagues. So do you foresee, you have three plots here. Are they, they kind of like, they're landlocked and backed up to yards? Have any of the neighbors lining either of those other streets commented on the plans yet? Or did they show up to the Planning Commission?
Not that I'm aware of. I know that Mike has spoken to many of them, and in fact, Mike Garrity lives a block away and has had correspondence with many of them. I don't think there's any negative feelings towards this that I'm aware of.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from council? Going once, twice? All right. Cool. Thanks, Justin. Thanks, Mike.
Sure thing.
All right, Mr. Mayor. And then my last item for tonight is a hot topic, I think, across the state, an update on small cell wireless. Mike, is that you again?
Yeah. So the second item dealing with small cells, and again, it's known by various terms, 5G. So for a couple of years, we've talked about this in various iterations. And what really brought it to a head was zoning hearing board application that we had last year. And essentially, the policies that we have in our zoning ordinance right now don't expressly address these things. They treat it as kind of non-tower facilities. And in doing so with that interpretation, it primarily focuses their use and location in industrial, commercial areas, not in the residential, not in the institutional area. And that being in terms of the push now towards becoming, you know, smart cities, providing have that ample accessibility for various businesses, downtown merchants, obviously for the students and the colleges. Obviously, the intention, and that in addition to a recent Pennsylvania Supreme Court decision, provided the impetus for revisiting this. So the project was given to Cohen Law Group to look into. They're kind of pretty much the experts in the state, and they prepared an amendment for us to consider, which is scheduled for December the 10th. And I've recently finalized a staff report to that. That has been loaded up, was circulated to both Keith Brenneman and back to Cohen Law Group to take a look at it. Cohen Law and Group just provided a couple edits, and that should be available for the public hearing, if not earlier, you guys. So at this point, if you asked me what was my opinion two years ago, I'd probably give you something completely different. But at this point, you know, a lot of change has occurred. So as I mentioned, try to get the recognition to be, you know, a smart town, to have that accessibility. And, you know, it's pretty much, at this point, considered just as vital, whether it's water, stormwater, sewer facilities, transportation for a community. So it's something that's definitely needs to be looked at and have, you know, very decent locations throughout the town.
Yeah. Council will hold a public hearing on this particular matter next Thursday at 7:00 PM to hear public comment as well, so.
Great. Thank you, Mike and Susan. I'll open this one up to questions in a second, but I wanted to throw this out to Mike and maybe Tim and Sean, they might know more than I do. But has the issue been cleared up with small cells and private property? I know a few years ago, that was an issue that was happening in some localities in Pennsylvania where the small cell sites were put on land where folks maybe felt like it shouldn't have. And I just didn't know if that's been cleared up legally yet.
I don't know if it's been cleared up legally, but the legislature is seeking to address some issues related to small cells and public rights of way. I'm not sure about private property, though. Mike, maybe you know, or Mayor?
Well, yeah. So when Cohen Law Group prepared their revised amendment, they're providing for small cells throughout all the zones in all districts whatsoever, so including the right-of-way. Now, with regards to, let's say, within the public right-of-way, if that's going to be located on an existing pole, et cetera, there's fairly lenient provisions for that. Now, if someone wanted to locate a small cell on, let's say, a commercial building, private property, you know, we do have some policies that have been prepared as part of the ordinance and including the design manual, even how that would impact maybe the historic overlay district. So at this point, getting back to the discussion as to providing for ample location, I don't believe, nor I read into Cohen Law Group's provision that there'll be any kind of heightened concern for having these things on private property. It'd be almost similar to back in the late 80s when a lot of municipalities were developing policies for small satellite dishes for TV.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions from council?
Just a clarification. I mean, this guidance has come down from FCC as a state shall comply, is the main impetus. Is that your, is that the main impetus for Pennsylvania and subsequently our response?
Correct. So the September 2018 advisory ruling provided by the FCC definitely weighed into how municipalities across the nation should be treating these things. And that came about after several years. I think principally in Silicon Valley, where a lot of municipalities were getting quite heavy-handed, both in terms of the regulation and even with regards to the franchise fees that were being, you know, essentially, I don't want to see demanded from the companies, but essentially that was really pushing the FCC to kind of have hearings and provide for guidance as to what is necessary and what would be considered, you know, crossing the line of appropriateness.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Thanks so much, Mike. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Public Works, who's taking that one?
I guess that would be me for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Brenda.
Sure. So I have two items tonight. The first one is I move that Borough Council consider authorizing the Borough Solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance prohibiting the use of engine-retarding devices, commonly known as Jake Brakes, on Spring Garden Street within the Borough of Carlisle.
Thank you. Counselor Landis makes a motion for an ordinance prohibiting the use of Jake Brakes on Spring Garden Street within the Borough. Is there a second? Anyone?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
My second item for tonight. I move that Borough Council approve the purchase of a $25,000, of up to $25,000 in LED light fixtures for streetlights at signalized intersections in the Borough from Shadler Yescow Distribution of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars Program.
Counselor Landis makes a motion involving purchase of streetlight fixtures. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by Counselor Hicks. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And that completes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on, budget and finance.
Okay. This may be, may be quick and simple. Council may remember that in the last several years, we have suspended parking downtown during shopping season to help shoppers and help merchants downtown. We had received some concerns from merchants that during the work week, the spaces were being consumed by employees downtown rather than having the nice turnover of shoppers that they would prefer. So this year, what we're proposing is a suspension of the parking fees at the parking garage from December 21st through January 3rd. This would, of course, promote shoppers using the parking garage, which is a good thing. We want people to get used to using that parking garage. And it also alleviates that concern about having turnover in the downtown district. And it's important, especially this year, to help support our merchants and restaurants downtown and give people that extra added relief when they're doing their holiday shopping. So Susan, I don't know if you, do you want to add anything to that? Or I got it?
You have it. We actually, the request came forward this year from Destination Carlisle. And understanding gold meters on your secondary streets are still free, so residents can still park free at gold meters, patrons as well, as well as downtown employees. The silver meters are the ones that are currently being enforced. We'll continue to do that. The silver meters are the ones that are currently being enforced, will continue to be enforced over the holiday season. Again, encouraging that turnover, you know, for, for downtown commerce. And, but we think it's ideal for the parking garage to be free for those two weeks, January, or December 21st through January 3rd. And Destination Carlyle, they, they, they also agreed with it. So, and I'm fairly certain the Downtown Carlyle Association will be more than supportive of it as well, so.
And Susan, you, you don't need direct action from council. This is something you can wave your magic wand and make it happen, right?
I can make it happen. It's always good to have consensus of council, though, on board as well, so.
I see smiles, for the best part.
All right. We'll go with it then. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Moving on to new business. Does anyone, either council or a member of the audience, have anything for council to consider? They'd like to bring forward at this point?
Mayor Scott, I, I believe Student Ambassador Del Maine may have some announcements to make this evening.
I did see her raise her hand. Esquire, please, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Borough Manager. I just wanted to share with everyone that I'll be holding a meeting on Monday from noon to 1:00 to learn about past initiatives of public and civic art that have happened in Carlyle. I'm starting to develop a project for the spring as part of my ambassadorship. And before anything happens, I want to hear and learn about all of the incredible work that folks have already done on this in Carlyle in order to apply that knowledge and also just learn from the folks who've been doing this long before I have, before anything gets going. So if you're interested in that information, I will put my email in the chat. If there's a way to post that on Facebook, folks can email me and I'll send the Zoom link. It's going to be a virtual meeting. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much for that work. And I'm sure Stephanie, between you and Stephanie, we can figure out how to get that information out to people. Appreciate it. All right. Anything else? Any other new business for council? All right. Hearing none. We will move to adjournment. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. See you next week.